A D fifteen school board business meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag to start things off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Yep.
All right, upcoming meetings, hope you'll all join us December thirteenth. We have a policy committee meeting at five thirty and a finance committee meeting at six thirty. That will be the rest of our meetings of the board and committees for the month of December. I know that you will miss us, but don't worry, we will be back with many, many meetings in January. Ken, I hear, no, sorry. Are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda that we need to consider? I haven't seen anything come through. All right, seeing none, are there any comments from the audience? You guys here make some comments? You can, everybody gets three minutes. All right, all right, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I hear a motion on the minutes of the November first business meeting?
I move we accept as printed the minutes of the November first twenty twenty-three regular business meeting.
Second. All right, discussion, anybody see anything that needs adjustment? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, great. Okay, we're gonna run through this meeting as quickly as possible because there are a lot of things, but we are going to take time for some recognition, Dr. King.
Hello, everyone. Normally, we have one or two people we like to recognize for their achievements. This evening, we have quite a few people and institutions that we're gonna recognize. So please bear with me. Portland Arts and Technology High School, PaaS student of the quarter. Thomas Lad for Carpentry, Will Carter for Automotive Technology Two, and Philip Sewell for Music. High School Band, All-New England Band Festival in Plymouth State. We had four students make that band, that's Annabelle Reynolds, Peter Curcio, Broden Fenton, and Quinn Lambero. All the music, the band, the chorus that I'm gonna mention tonight, these are competitive and students have to audition to get in. High School Band, District Two Regional Honors Music Festival. Region Two consists of sixteen high schools and middle schools in southwestern Maine. District Two honors band is Quinn Lambero and Zachary Murphy. High School Chorus, District Two Regional Honors Music Festival. Ireland Mustn't See, Cora Richardson, Kylie Bailey, Kylie Morrison, Lucy Collins, Michaela Gill, Isabel Reynolds, Kaylee Anne Martley, Alex McVicker, Mia Riley, Zachary Murphy, and Marcus Wild. Middle School Band, District Two Regional Honors Music Festival, Hazel Waterman. Middle School Chorus, District Two Regional Honors Music Festival. Isana Bell, Isabella Hewlett, J.D. Varela, Finley Bishop, Leila Anjar, Colleen Baruga, Ainsley Harris, Benjamin Forton, Isaac Colby, and Sawyer Cody. If that sounds like a lot of students making District Two and regional band competitions through their auditions, it's tripled in the last four or five years and that's a tribute to our students and our music teachers who have really done a great job with these kids. And then for cross-country athletics, the Maine State Meet, Carter Libby won second place and was recognized as an All-New England runner.
Quick round of applause for our great students and their accomplishments.
And those of you that are familiar with the U.S. News World Report, they rank colleges throughout the country and they rank high schools throughout the country on various criteria. For Maine, the results just came out for Maine. And Maine high schools must instruct students in eight subject areas, including career and education development and world language, the scholastic aptitude test, and the Maine Comprehensive System assesses students in core subjects. The U.S. News and World Report has ranked Gray New Gloucester High School sixteenth out of all high schools in Maine. The ranking criteria are based on student data, including demonstrating outstanding outcomes in math, reading, and science, and earning qualifying scores in various college-level exams, and our level of graduation rates. And Ms. Turner has created a comprehensive comparative spreadsheet with our high school and all the other high schools in the state of Maine, if you want to do a little deeper dive. So I'm very, very pleased to be able to say that the results of this high school, sixteenth out of roughly a hundred twenty high schools in the state of Maine, is, I think, impressive.
You're here. That's it, oh, okay. Thought we might be recognizing some more people, I got a trance there. Sixteenth is great, that is fantastic. Okay. Let's move into the old business. First up is to hear a report from our high school principal, Sadie Grealish, regarding the New England Association of Schools and Colleges with an update on alternative options for accreditation with possible action to follow. Jade, you gonna join up, wow, it's all three of you.
Yeah, I'm just tech support.
Oh.
Hold please.
Here we go.
Excellent. Good evening, again, I'm Sadie Grealish, the principal of the high school, along with Jade Postello, our incredible assistant principal. We're here to share, I think this is our third presentation, on NEASK and other possible options that we've explored to look at some of our just overviews and policies and procedures. So NEASK extension, again, just a reminder that we are granted a two-year extension for NEASK. This gave us time to explore a couple different organizations. The one that we are most excited about and want to share with you tonight is Great Schools Partnership. Great Schools Partnership, actually, before we start, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we are dedicated to school improvement, to looking at over our practices and making sure that we are doing the best practices. But we really wanted to also align it with our strategic plan and our school improvement plans. And just a little bit of a reminder, NEASK, throughout the process, the reason we explored the options is there was limited impact on growth in a lot of times. And also, we have limited professional development time and financial resources that were definitely impacted through that process. Two computers. So Great School Partnership proposal, they talk about two different, throughout the ten-year cycle, they have years one through four, they talk about light-touch coaching years. In years five through ten, they would do a self-evaluation. So when we work with NEASK, they do one evaluation of our school every ten years. With Great Schools Partnership, they would do that same report or similar report twice within that ten-year cycle. We really wanted to align it with our strategic plan years so that way we can get a really good assessment of where we are with our strategic plan. Part of their model, they would design during the years one through four and also the years six through nine, they would design and lead workshops with administrators and also with our leadership team. With the administrators, we'd focus on evaluation planning, strategic plan, data analysis, and also a partnership with them on our professional development priorities. With the leadership team, they would do a focus on building their instructional leadership skills and then also the capacity to grow in teams, again, right-aligned with our strategic plan and our school improvement goals. They would also provide quarterly resources to administration and to teacher leaders with just some updates on school improvement. So we would definitely have a lot of touchpoints with them throughout the year. They would also engage staff and leadership in focused conversations around our assets, obstacles, and key domains of global best practices. The Global Best Practices is an international benchmark of self-assessment tools for secondary learning. So it's just still some core common characteristics of high-performing schools, not only in the United States but also abroad. And they present them with more of a user-friendly, with actual action steps on how to achieve their goals. For our school, some of the highlights that we were excited about what they could do for our school is reviewing our learning standards, looking over our organizational structure, leadership models, teaching strategies, professional development, and also a focus on student outcome. And again, really relating that to high-performing schools and research-based best practices. The big kind of difference in this is rather than giving schools, boards, and district leadership a, here's a checklist of all the things you need to do, their reports have, here's things that you need to do, but here are action steps on how we can get you and support you to get you to those points. The self-evaluation years, which would be at year five and then again also at year ten, would be again that evaluation and self-reflection and around very similar areas of teaching and learning, the academic expectations, and really looking at our assessment practices, school culture. And then they have a school leadership component, which is also the building leadership as well as our teacher leaders and leadership team, and a component on teacher recruitment and retention as well. So some of the outcomes based on that investigation that the board could expect to see is findings and recommendations based on school and classroom observations that they do, data analysis, and also they would have different focus groups throughout, again, year five and year ten. They would develop a set of recommendations for improvement and also, again, the action steps on how we can get there. And they would write and publish a report ensuring accessibility for all stakeholders to get the information that they need. So it is, in many parts, is similar to NEASK, but the depth and support and like that connection to our strategic plan is definitely more robust with this process.
Yeah, so another really critical thing that Sadie already hit on, but that we just wanted to make sure the board heard, is that, you know, before we even spent a dime with this, with GSP, and obviously that's why we're here to talk to you folks, we spent some time with some of their leadership team and their consultants. And they immediately, they had already, even before we met, honed in on what the anchor artifact is in this district to drive improvement, and that's the strategic plan. And so they, in some of their proposals to us and some of their discussions for us, they really honed in on domains one and two. Domain one being high-quality instruction. And I think, like Sadie touched on, compared to NEASK versus giving us a lot of recommendations, some of which might seem relevant and connected to what we're already doing, they really want to dive in and do some monthly coaching for us and monthly coaching for our teacher leaders, supporting our students to continue accessing the rigorous curriculum and the opportunities that they are, as testified by the news that Craig shared, and then provide coaching and support ongoing so that we can, so that we can filtrate all of our learning out back to our teachers. So I was just really impressed already with their ability to hone in on that strategic plan and make connections to their proposal with us, to what we're, where we're already swimming as a district. And those were the three, three main things. And then that second domain that we talk about as a district, the safe nurturing and responsive school environment, that is, that is something else that they honed in on in their proposal, just wanting to help with our MTS SB work, facilitating workshops around those multi-tiered systems of supports, helping us improve behavior, helping us amp up our response to intervention framework, which for those of you who live in the world of education, can be a little tricky at the secondary level. And I'm really excited to see some of the coaching and support they can give us there for those tier-two and tier-three kiddos who, who aren't quite at the top and that just need a little extra in order to, to get to graduation. And then help us review all of the enrichment activities that we offer to our students, making sure that we have something for everyone, and thinking about like instructionally and culture-wise, how we can use the resources we have to improve that for kids as well. So they, they really did a great job connecting to those first two domains of the strategic plan, which was exciting for us.
And a cost comparison. So again, this is based, I did connect with schools in Cumberland County to get a cost estimate that they, ones that have had within five years with a NEASK review. The closest one was five years ago, so again, this is based on that. So obviously, the cost of lodging and food has increased since then. But the last cycle, when we did our NEASK visit, they had one site visit per a ten-year cycle. Since then, they've changed their practice where they do a site visit for the collaborative site visit at year eight, and then a ten-year visit as well. So between the collaborative site visit, the decennial site visit, annual fees and staff, it's approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars for that ten-year cycle. And again, that is definitely on the lower end of what it would cost. For the Great Schools Partnership, for the annual cost, for all that coaching and all of that support, as well as our self-evaluation, which again is two self-evaluations, one at year five and one at year ten, that cost would be eighty-eight thousand for that ten-year cycle. The other big sort of benefit, I know talking with Diane for Finance, is again, that's pretty consistent over the years rather than smaller chunks and really large chunks on those other years. So it definitely does have a cost savings as well. Yep.
And we know this is review for many, but there are a few new faces. One thing that we wanted to highlight last spring was that Superintendent King helped us to connect with a lot of colleges and universities, some local, different, sort of different tiers of colleges. And all of the feedback that we heard back from those inquiries were that pulling, potentially pulling away from NEASK would not impact our students' future as far as being accepted into those institutions as long as we were doing our jobs of having a system of school improvement and instructional accountability, and that we could, we could share that with those schools. And then, just to share again, almost a decade ago now, our neighbors down in Portland stepped away from the NEASK process due to cost and due to effectiveness in dragging school improvement. And they're, you know, they haven't seen or report any impact on scholarships, financial aid, college acceptance, high schoolers readiness for rigorous schools. Same thing with dozens of schools across New England. New Hampshire, Massachusetts have just explored other options because they want something that is more tailored to, to driving school improvement versus just giving a surface-level report that then, you know, we sort of have to go back and figure out how to work with. So we've just seen lots of neighbors in New England head in this direction. And we have yet to hear a story about, an anecdote or a piece of data about that having a negative impact on a graduate from any of those schools.
And as we've shared in the past, the NEASK team is a huge part of the process. So it's with NEASK, it's sort of a roll of the dice on who you're gonna have for your NEASK team. They put it out to all schools throughout Maine to see if teachers are willing and able to leave the classroom. And as we know, it's getting more challenging for teachers to leave a classroom for a week. So there has been a lot of times where the feedback has been from many schools that are involved in the NEASK process that the team has not been as strong with that feedback as well. So the one benefit that we found for Great Schools Partnership is to have that experienced, high-quality educational consultant with us throughout the process. They would also be able to really have that focus on teaching and learning and really moving our strategic goals and our district goals and providing that constant, ongoing feedback rather than, and many times, the NEASK process is like a checkbox. We were just kind of putting teams of teachers together, pulling administrators away, pulling teacher leaders just to kind of tackle certain topics that really, many times, were not about that instructional practice and teaching and learning.
And I'll just end with, whether we're talking about eighty-eight thousand dollars or a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking about a big investment over a ten-year period. And I think from the research we've done and from, you know, the discussions we've had with our own leadership team and then our own experiences over the last, gosh, fifteen, eighteen years in education at this point, we really feel strongly like this is a better use of our resources and time in order to, to continue to make, make the high school a great place for kids in this community. But we know it is not a small amount of money and it's not a small decision. So that's why we wanted to give as much information and spend the time that we have making our proposal.
In addition to this as well, a lot of the schools that we connected with, we do do the five-year IB full evaluation as well. And so they come in and look at our IB programming. So that on top of this, we feel like will really give us a really good snapshot of where we are and, and being able to, again, provide you guys with more time-sensitive information and feedback about where we are as a school as well.
Great. So just to be clear, it is your recommendation that we go with Great Schools instead of NEASK?
It is.
Okay, great. Any questions for Sadie or Jade?
I think all three presentations were very thorough and so much information. Thank you for taking the time to gather all of that and meet with all of the consultants. I think it's wonderful stuff, so.
All right, I would hear, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to go over the cost again, please. I just want to understand, the hundred and ten thou, a hundred and ten thousand, that is for ten-year period?
Yep.
And any, what does that service include?
So that includes?
I mean, not the whole of what you just mentioned, but I mean,
Yep.
if you need consultants, if you need that type of thing, is there an additional cost?
So the hundred and ten thousand was for the NEASK. So that would include, they, we do annual presentations. And again, staff salaries have increased, so we would use staff to do some of the report writing when they want the feedback from teachers. And then that would include a site visit in year eight, and then another site visit in year ten. For Great Schools Partnership, we would have the coaching provided within that eighty-eight thousand. That's all of our resources that we need, that's their travel to come to and from. They're sending, so that's including travel for the coaches, that's including all coaching in-person workshops. And that's also including both the five and ten-year evaluations.
And there would be no other additional costs throughout the year?
Or? There would not be, they would commit to a four-year period, a five-year period, and then they keep going, but unless like mileage or things like that would increase, but it would be very minimal. But they would commit to the initial, they want to align with our strategic plan, so they would commit to the same cost for the next four years for that five-year cycle. And then after that, but that's, they said it would be very minimal and it isn't often, in the schools that they've worked with, the increase is very, very minimal, if any. They really try to keep it within that.
And you mentioned that they review assets of the school?
Mm-hmm.
Is that all part of the?
Yes, yep.
Valuation, okay, all the valuations to be included?
Yes, yep, all the evaluations, their report. Similar to NEASK, they did have a couple options. One is that the schools kind of gather a lot of the information and then we present the data to them, which is very similar to NEASK. We would kind of facilitate a lot of those, you know, group meetings and then we would present that information. There is other options where they can come in and gather all that information on themselves, but again, the cost definitely goes up. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I had a question. Since your last presentation, is there anybody else jettison NEASK for Great Schools Partnership?
There is not one that we were.
I don't know the answer to that, Jim, I mean, not anyone local that we're aware of.
Not a big fan of following Portland, but I guess I might make an exception in this case.
I know, I mean, Sadie can speak to it more, but it is a very hot topic among all of the Cumberland County leadership teams, just about, you know, looking more at like a consultancy leadership coaching model that's gonna help bring in PD and sort of get right in the weeds with these educators versus the NEASK teams coming in and just sort of doing a surface-level visit and then giving reports. So I don't know that anyone is going straight to GSP, but people are, people are looking and having a lot of conversations about moving away.
Are there other accreditation boards, for lack of a better term, that you looked at and you decided to go with this one?
And so Quality School Review is who, a lot of schools in the Boston area and some in New Hampshire, most are either using Great Schools Partnership or the Quality School Review. And again, that will not provide the full accreditation, but it will provide our reports. So it will provide school improvement reports, which again is what the colleges want to see, that we're doing that reflection process, we're having those conversations. But those were the two main, Quality School Reviews and Great School Partnerships that had the positive feedback. There were other smaller ones, but definitely not ones that we felt could give us this in-depth feedback on where we are as a school and how we can move from sixteen to eight.
The other thing is this, this organization is, is based in Maine. You know, one of their, their central offices is from Maine. They use a lot of Maine educators to grow into their leadership team. So as far as access and cost, this is, you know, this is pretty ideal because when we were talking about mileage, they already said to us, well, we can try to make sure that we assign you Maine consultants to keep those costs down and that type of thing. So this is definitely.
It's more of a peer review kind of a thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to, some know it all, coming up from Massachusetts. Give you a report that goes in the shelf.
Yeah.
You got it.
We definitely want it to be a living document where we're reflecting at a lot of our leadership discussions, our team meetings, our department meetings are really focused on the data and the information.
It's certainly very apparent you've done your homework.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Should someone want to make?
Somebody make.
Take me there. So do we need to just offer authority to make the move? Or do we, as a board, say we want to, you know what I mean, who actually?
I, I would entertain a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation that we replace our program with NEASK with this one, with GSP, allowing the administrative staff to manage the details.
So move.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Thanks so much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Calvin? Do your folks need the, don't touch that computer. Are you guys?
Do you want me to close the screen so it comes back to, okay.
Do you guys need the computer at all?
I don't think we need the computer.
All right.
Microphone may not.
No, that's great, yeah. I just don't want to touch the computer because we got it all set up. Does anybody object to allowing Calvin and our students to hop the line a little bit so that they don't have to wait for the transportation report to be done?
Definitely.
Right.
All right, come on up, guys. Let's hear a presentation from the middle school STEM students.
Okay. If you want to come back here.
Okay.
We'll do, we'll talk and then we'll present.
Okay.
Not for something completely different. Hi, I'm Calvin Valencourt, I should speak into the microphone. I'm the new middle school STEM teacher. I used to be outdoor teacher and after that, the math and science teacher, one of the math and science teachers at the middle school. I'd like to thank Superintendent King for inviting us here to present. These two wonderful students have really done an amazing job in my class and I can't wait for them to show you what they've done. In my class, we address engineering standards with a particular focus on iterative design. The idea being that as they build something, I want them to be able to tear it apart. After they see how it works, try again, change things constantly, rearranging it because to me, that's the essence of the design process, is that iterative design. Try it, see how you like it, change it, and see if it works better. I define the problem, teach and review skills, and then allow the students the opportunity to be creative and use their knowledge and flexibility to find one of many solutions. Creativity and flexibility. Technical progress, currently the rapid rise of AI in particular, makes it hard for the education system to adequately prepare students for the world they'll be entering. The ability to think creatively and use their knowledge flexibly will be the most important tool these guys have for success in the future. If I can quote someone, during a recent commencement, commencement speech at Western New England University, Dr. Neil deGrasse Tyson, I feel like he summed up the idea really well. Imagine there are two candidates coming in for a job interview. And the first candidate walks in and they ask them, how tall is the spire at the top of this building? And the first candidate says, oh, I know exactly how tall it is. I'm an engineer, I mean, I'm an architect, I know the heights, I've memorized the heights of all the important buildings in this town. This building is exactly a hundred and fifty-five feet tall. And it's the right answer, good job. The second candidate comes in and they ask the same question. He says, I don't know the answer to that question, but let's go outside and find out. And they go outside and they measure the length of the shadow of the building. And this person obviously knows their own height, so they measure the length of their shadow. And they use what they learned in sixth grade ratios to compare the ratio of the length of their shadow to the length of the shadow of the building. And they come up with an answer, like a rough estimate of a hundred and fifty feet. It's not the exact right answer, but it's close. And they use their creativity and their flexible knowledge that they gained here, even in middle school, to solve a complex problem like that. Who would you hire? And they use their creativity and their flexible knowledge that they gained here, even in middle school, to solve a complex problem like that. Who would you hire?
The second one.
So you want, yeah, me too. All right. So these two young amazing students have done an excellent job of using flexibility, using their prior knowledge, and integrating it into a solution to the question, how can we control and manipulate simple objects like soda cans using hydraulics and simple materials? I'll let them explain from here.
Um, hi, everyone. My name's Aida Waterman.
And I'm Elizabeth Key.
Um, we are both students of Mr. V's class, and we volunteered here today so we could model, but we've worked on this past trimester.
We want to keep it brief and mostly show you how our arm works, but we also want to explain the science and engineering behind how and why it works.
Um, I will do my best to like elaborate while Elizabeth will show what I mean with our arm and our demonstration syringes. Which are these, okay. Okay. Um, Mr. V taught us about the difference between pneumatics and hydraulics, and how they apply to our project, and how this concept is relevant for our project. Pneumatics is the movement of gases, in our case, air. So that's our syringe. And then hydraulics is the, um, force that travels from one place to another using liquids, in our case, water, which is the syringe. Um, these syringes represent the ones in our arms over here, which, and which in the process of building, we originally had filled with air. But, um, this is less effective because air compresses, so the movement isn't as fluid and not as easy. So see, the air compresses in our syringes. Um, whereas water, for the hydraulics, you cannot compress it, and it moves from one place to the other like that. Okay, um, so this makes it like better working. Okay, um, as far as deciding how to make the arm though, we had, we had to take into account our levers. So we have like, uh, our large kind of example here. So this also, this kind of, uh, work, like was with what Mr. V was talking about with ratios, like how levers are relevant. So if you were here, if you were to hold the, this, pretend this is our lever, if you were, or like say this is our ratio, okay? This, if you were to hold it into the middle, it's a one to one ratio, so it's equally balanced. So if we were to, if this was our arm, and we were to push down, it would go up as much as we push down. So if you go up as much as it pushes, if you, as it goes down.
Okay, if we push it down one foot, then this side will go up one foot.
It's equal. But if we were to, um, move this right here, it would go up, down, if it would go down, we would push it down one foot, it would go up two feet, so it's like an unequal ratio. How this applies to our arm is, it's all about balance and reach. So like, so if we, for this and power, so if we were to, if we were to push down one right here, it would go up two, which would make it, um, a further distance, like you can reach further, however, the power would be less.
So like if we, if we push down ten pounds of power on this side, you'd only be able to lift up five pounds.
Yeah. So, um, more reach equals less power, um, less power equals longer reach. So how we applied this to our arm was for, here, work this way. So for this syringe right here is our rotation, our, like, our base rotation syringe. So for this, we want to rotate more, and power isn't really like important in this. So we wanted it closer, the syringe person closer to our base, so that the reach could be further extended, and the power was kind of like, the back, that balance wasn't really important. Okay, so, yeah. Um, these, these are definitely important concepts that we had to consider while building our arm.
Mr. V helped us with all of this. He has a teaching style that makes them more creative.
He helped us hone our skills outside of the actual building part. For example, we had to use a lot of teamwork. Um, perseverance, because like that was important, just so we could keep creating, making our arm. And, um, communication, definitely. We had to work on that. So thank you, Mr. V. And if you don't mind, we are going to give a quick demonstration on how our arm works.
I hope so, yeah.
So the original idea of our arm was to move a can from point A to point B. Okay, ready? So each of these syringes operate a different part, the claw, the elbow, as we call it, um, the shoulder, and rotation. Okay, so the first thing, we're going to move this, this can from A to B. Okay. Yeah, and then we also, so this is kind of what, what we had to do in class. We had like a, we had to do a competition where we had to pick up knocked over cans and move cans. It was really cool. Okay, so we're going to do a knocked over can now.
The goal being to stand it up?
Stand it up on point B. Okay. Yeah, so we did this, we, oh, we were, what Mr. V was talking about, iterative, iterative design. We had like a lot of different like times that we messed up and we had to redo it, or redo certain parts or make them better because they fell apart. So we improved it a lot. And this syringe actually completely like burst, and then we do it. Yeah, so thank you. That's basically it.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Any questions about this STEM class?
Do you have any questions for our young scientists?
Great, great presentation.
In this syringe, does this pink, blue, green is a color difference for you guys, or just, just a dye to be able to distinguish?
Um, especially with the tubing while we were connecting it, it helped, but also looks good. Style points.
I appreciate the style.
Always, gotta have style points.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, while they dismantle that, next up, we're going to hear recommendations for the, from the ad hoc committee on student transportation. That document was in your pocket, so you've seen it, but I do, we are going to do a presentation on it for the public, and just so that we can run through it quickly. Jason, we never did rock, paper, scissors. You want me to go through it?
Sounds great.
Yeah, I thought so. Thank you, Jim. You? All right. So I'm just going to go over this for the public. I know that people on the board know a lot of this information, some of it will be information you don't know yet when we get into the recommendations of the committee. But just to summarize for people, we had transportation issues at the end of last year, over the course of last year, at the beginning of this year. It was coming to really dominate discussion in a number of committees and at the board level, kind of over and over again. We did not really have the time in any of those arenas to, you know, really tackle the problem. So we did form on October fourth, an ad hoc student transportation committee at our business meeting. Those committee members by my and Dr. King's appointment were Craig, Jeff Robbins, who is the Dunn School principal, also oversees special projects, including the transportation department, Diane Boucher, who is our director of operations and finance, along with three board members, Jason, Lauren, and myself. Once we formed the committee, we also, as part of that formation, decided to invite some local community members so that we had some people with some perspective and some outside skills. We were able to obtain the services of Jason Libby, Sean Lambert, and Tia Zukowski, all of whom have children in our district, but also have other sort of skills and backgrounds that made them good fits for the committee, and just want to take an opportunity now to thank them. We did have four two-hour meetings, and they absolutely did not have to give us those eight hours of their time, and they did, and they were very helpful. We also were able to gather information from commercial trucking operations via the phone. Dr. King did some interviewing. And we also had both of our state representatives, that represent Graham Gloucester, Anne Graham, and Amy Arada, come to our third meeting, not only to hear some of our discussion, but also to offer their expertise in what opportunities there might be for legislative redress. Jason was elected the committee chair at the committee's first meeting on October seventeen. So we started by doing a lot of information gathering. There was a number of bullet points for foundational information about how many buses we have, how many kids are on the buses, all that sort of thing. We had a presentation on the transportation and operations from Dr. King and Mr. Robbins. We also had KJ Chase and John Stoltz, who are our trainer and dispatcher at the bus garage, respectively, give a little testimony on their jobs and some of their pain points. And we did a survey of all of the employees of the transportation department to get their feedback on what some of the issues were and what some possible solutions might be. We defined that problem. You know, that, as much as we defined the problem, really the problem is we don't have enough bus drivers. But what we realized is that, you know, it's not as binary as enough bus drivers or not enough bus drivers. There were efficiencies that we could find. And there were, you know, some issues that we really hadn't taken a look at in a while, a lot of, you know, bubble gum and duct tape holding things together. So we, you know, took a look at the holistic form of our transportation issue, and as you can see, we defined the problem. There's a lot of problems, but, you know, sometimes you got to name the problem before you fix it. So then we really did a lot of brainstorming. We did a literature review, which is linked in the full document, where, you know, you'll see it says literature review of sorts, right? If you're someone who has done academic work for a master's or a PhD, literature review means something a little different than doing a lot of Googling. I did a lot of Googling, Craig did a lot of Googling. We came up with a number of solutions that other districts, both in Maine, around the country, even in Canada, had come up with. And we use that as sort of the basis of our brainstorming. At the end of the brainstorming, we had about twenty, actually, we had exactly twenty ideas that we felt were worth pursuing further. We decided to vet those ideas using a tool where we ranked those solutions based on six factors. How much it would cost, how many people hours it would require, how much time it would take to implement, how difficult it was in terms of solution complexity, whether it introduced new levels of risk to our school district, and how likely the size of the impact is, right? So the ideal solution is a cheap thing that we can do tomorrow, that doesn't increase our risk, and will solve the whole problem. We didn't find any like that, but we were able to rank the solutions. And so after doing that recommendation, doing that ranking exercise, and then talking about whether those rankings made sense, really, it was just a way to kind of prioritize our discussion. We were not beholden to the scores that the various solutions got, but it was a really good way to kind of get beyond the sort of subjective nature and allow us to have a little bit of objective data. We had nine solutions that rose to the top as recommended for implementation, and they're in the report with the details, much larger than you're going to see here. We had another eight that we thought were good ideas, are worthy of our administration taking a further look at, but were probably not great fits to start right now. And then we had three ideas that when we looked at them, they were unlikely to create any positive impact and not worth our time pursuing further. So I'm just going to go quickly through the nine recommended solutions. And they all have more detail, and they have little names, and they are numbered in the document. If you just go right to the end of the document, you'll see like option seventeen is the top recommend. That's because we named all of these ideas, one through twenty, and then that number carries through the whole report. So when you see option one, that's option one throughout the whole report. So one, you know, some of these things are pretty simple. One is opening the transportation needs survey at the end of the school year instead of waiting till the beginning of the next school year, allowing us to start gathering data on who actually needs a bus stop and a bus ride earlier. Getting that data in earlier, and also providing incentives to parents to get that data in there. One of the things that really caused a lot of trouble at the beginning of this school year is about twenty-five percent of our parents didn't indicate their transportation needs by the first day of school. So obviously, that caused a little stir and drag on day one. We can avoid that, get that number lower, we're going to have fewer problems. Recommendation two, we want to encourage the bus drivers to consider themselves professionals, give them more professional development, and make sure that they understand that they're included in these problem-solving solutions so that they feel like a part of our district, and those bus drivers that we do have, we retain them. Recommendation three, we want to work with our local legislators to express our need for legislation that can target it, especially at the training requirements. For instance, there is something called the under-the-hood requirement for training, where every bus driver needs to be able to open the hood of the bus and identify certain parts of the engine. For some people, they are literally not tall enough to open that door, and they cannot qualify to be a bus driver. That seems counterproductive to us. So what we want to do is get our legislators, and they showed up at our meeting, to advocate for us. It's particularly timely right now, as the Secretary of State is right this moment preparing a very similar report to this one for the legislature that will be presented in the first week of January. So what we're hoping is they'll have this in hand, our legislators will, and they'll be able to respond to that Secretary of State report, and make sure that real, on-the-ground solutions are considered as part of that. Recommendation four, we want to expand or establish, in some cases, our relationships with those organizations like Central Maine Community College, Southern Maine Community College, various adult education, various trucking agencies that certify people with CDLs. So they know that we are looking for bus drivers with these credentials, and we are a great place to work. We want to make sure we get those recent graduates into our district instead of them going elsewhere. One of the advantages of having Tia Zukowski on our committee is that she works at Central Maine Community College and was able to tell us, oh, wow, we have a brand-new CDL program opening up. Do you want to talk to the instructor? Yes, we do. Recommendation five, we want to expand our digital footprint. We did a brief review of where we are advertising for bus drivers, and there are many more recruitment services that we could be using. And what we're going to do is just do a little search engine optimization to make sure that we're putting our ads where bus drivers are searching for them. Pretty simple, but, you know, not something that we've done. We just sort of, you know, buy the ads from the Portland Press Herald. They say, hey, it goes on these few sites, and, you know, that's pretty good, but we can do more, and we will do more. Recommendation six, there are a number of opportunities that we've identified for getting out into the community and doing onsite job fairs. When the new Gloucester Community Fair is happening, we want to have a table there where we say, hey, come work for the district. Can we put a table in Hannaford? Can we put a table at the Blueberry Festival? Wherever there are people who might not know about opportunities in our district, we want to get out in front of them. Recommendation seven, we think there is some opportunity for signage and striping of the roads to make the pickup and drop-off process at our schools more efficient. Each of our schools has kind of figured out their own best way of doing things, and they've done- and they've done a great job making things efficient. But maybe we need one of those boxes drawn on the street on Libby Hill Road so it's clear to people, "Hey, don't stop here because it gums up the works forever." Maybe there's some discussion we can have with DOT about fixing the lights at the Hannaford Corner so that people going straight to pick up their groceries after they've dropped off their kids don't stop 37 people from taking a right-hand turn. We think there's opportunities for efficiency there, and we want to explore them. Recommendation eight. We think there's a lot of opportunity. Dr. King was taking in a movie down at the Nickelodeon down in Portland, and lo and behold, he saw an ad for the Cumberland Schools saying, "Come drive a bus for us." Well, that's absolutely something that we should be doing. So we, the committee recommends that we create some video and audio assets. You know, radio advertising is very cheap and effective. Come be a bus driver for MSAD-15. Hey, we are the 16th-best high school in the state. Don't you want to be associated with that? We'll even give you a T-shirt. Recommendation nine. We believe that we should establish a standard referral bonus, not just for bus drivers, but this is something that many of us have at the places where we work in the private sector. We don't currently have this in the district, and we recommend that if you bring someone to us who is employed in our district for a certain amount of time, you should be rewarded for that. The details, what we'll figure out in the budget process with the administration. So those are the nine recommendations that the committee believes that the board should put forward for the administrative staff to pursue. And really, the next steps are board discussing this recommendation, deciding whether or not we want to put it forward. And then the committee recommends that we get reports from administration at three, six, and 12-month points after this meeting so we hear how the implementation of the plan is going. So before I step back to my chair seat, are there any questions, you know, sort of clarifying questions about the report itself or how the report was created? All right, I am going to return to my seat. I can get back in here. Also, I just, you know, want to thank the committee for their time, effort, and energy. As you can see, it's a pretty substantial report. Jason, appreciate all of your work as the chair. Appreciate our administrative staff for coming in, the Transportation Committee for their support, I mean, Department for their support with all the data. So I will open it to discussion. Any questions or comments on the recommendations or the report itself? Go ahead, Gary.
The survey you did of Transportation Department employees that are here now. Was there anything in that that you learned that was new, different, surprising, informative? And where is that reflected, that information reflected in these recommendations?
I would say it was part of our discussion. We didn't include the survey, and that's an artifact that we get attached to this report. Craig's probably the best person to answer that.
Yeah, we met with them, we had a 90-minute meeting, actually. And we talked about, let me bring up quickly.
Trying to think. Jason opened up to you or Lauren. Things that we were surprised by there, or anything that we particularly learned?
So we asked them three questions. And they were, "Why do you drive a school bus? If you were speaking to a 30-year-old person considering being a bus driver, what would you tell them are the positive things about being a bus driver? And if you're speaking to a 30-year-old person considering being a bus driver, what would you tell them the negative things are?" And it was very interesting. "Why are you a school bus driver? The hours work well for me and my family. The school calendar works well for me and my family. I enjoy working with kids. I love working with kids, and it helped with my daycare needs." So they had a lot of good reasons. Most of them were, "The schedule works for them," and "They like working with kids," which is huge. And then I phrased a question, "If you're speaking to a 30-year-old," because that's, we're looking for people that want to make this a career. You can make a good living as a bus driver, so we want people to drive a bus for us for five, 10, 15, 20 years. And they say, "You don't have to drive during bad weather. The work hours and schedule are good. There's flexibility. A reasonable, you can get a school bus license and make a good living with less training than a lot of jobs. It's not boring. I don't like working indoors. Having access to overtime hours is appealing. I like the kids, and the vast majority behave well. I like the benefits package." And that's something that a lot of the public doesn't know is that bus drivers and support staff have a really good benefits package with matching IRA contributions, health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance. Almost all of them to one said that's what we would tell younger people about being a bus driver, that it has a really good benefits package. And then what are some of the negative things would you say that you would tell someone about becoming a bus driver? And one is making sure you have a competitive wage. The pay needs to match the responsibility, meaning it's such a massive responsibility to be a bus driver and get kids to and fro safely. The CDL license is a massive responsibility and a massive undertaking. They're recognizing that it's really hard to get certified as a bus driver now, unlike when they became bus drivers five and 10 years ago. It's much, much more difficult. So those were the kinds of things. And then they gave us some suggestions on what we could do to improve. Make sure kids are all on time at the bus stops, so you don't have to wait for them. Recalibrate the light at Hannaford. That was virtually every person said. And then, what else did they say? Consolidate some of the bus stops. So those are some of the suggestions that they said we could do. And so, yeah, that was a very fruitful discussion.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Penny.
This is great, and I like the model in general. I think we can apply it to solving other problems in the future. On option 16, car lines, and just generally, I think there's a lot of great recommendations and the work was done, but considerations have some of like, maybe we can do it with this, or we may require that. Who, what's the, like, where does the determination happen if we pull in, like, a traffic flow expert or not?
Right, so, you know, anything that has a budget impact is gonna be something that we have to consider as part of our budget process, right? Or, you know, it might be something that we have funds in the Transportation Department for because we budgeted for two bus drivers that we have been unable to hire so far. So basically, what we're saying is we understand that, you know, signage isn't free. You know, painting lines aren't free. The, you know, the town might say, "We will not paint those lines." What we want to do is identify, you know, the holes in the argument so that the administration knows we're not saying, "Hey, this is super easy to do." And those things that require spend, it may be that they can't start them until next year because it's a spend that we'd have to make. And often, if that spend was considerable, that would push things into our "should be considered" pile because, you know, we're really gonna have to think about it, right? So if something's gonna cost us $50,000 this year, you know, that, this might be a tough budget year, and, you know, that might make it just untenable for, just for monetary reasons. Even if it's a great idea, we're gonna have to balance that with how much the likely impact is gonna be next year. And it might be, you know, a lot of these problems get different if, you know, knock on wood, we have a couple of people in our pipeline. If we can hire two bus drivers between now and next September, you know, a lot of these problems get easier. If we could be running two extra lines, we have the buses. You know, a lot of this wait-time stuff and kids being on the bus for 45 minutes to an hour, that gets a lot reduced.
And like, someone like a traffic flow expert is that maybe someone who, like, we know people refuse to move up the middle school. Middle school parents, please move up to the cone. Kills me. If you do anything, drive up to the cone. So we know there's a problem that, you know, that 15 more cars at a time, but there's probably a professional, right, who's like, "I know how to make the cars move up?"
Very possibly.
And that would maybe we need to...
Right, and it might be that we need to spend $5,000 to have that report created as, you know, we've done other engineering designs and that kind of thing. Go ahead, Jim.
Has the district traffic engineer been contacted about the light? I mean, I'm sure he can come out there and speak with somebody and see the dysfunction, and he could make a...
I don't know the answer to that because this is just our recommendations for things to do. But we have not, you know, talked to DOT about the light personally, no. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would love to provide a motion, but same question as last time. What are we...
I would entertain a motion that we accept the committee's report and recommend that our administration follow the recommendations of the committee to the best of their abilities.
So, second.
Second. All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor? Thanks so much to the committee once again, and I agree with Penny. I think this targeted approach to some of these problems that have been kind of nagging at the district might be something that I ask us to deploy again in the future. I thought the committee was really effective. I thought our time was really well-spent. And, you know, you can see the quality of the report. Even if, you know, only five or six of the recommendations end up panning out, I still think it's a really nice plan. Go ahead, Gary.
51 and RC 14 are both advertising at Smitty's and all their associated. The superintendent in 14 saw 51's ad in the window of Smitty's and had an ad created to run in the fountain of Smitty's. Felt it was only fair.
I like the cut of their jib. And we will now make a, says, "Do you want to work in Cumberland?"
It's not just bus drivers, it was a variety of, "Wouldn't you like to work here?"
Yeah, and actually, that was the committee's opinion in general is a lot of these ideas work for the nutrition staff or ed techs or other positions that we're looking to fill. So, you know, it was just a good idea to sort of examine some of the things that we could do District 1. The job fair, you know, we should absolutely have a table at these community events and make sure, a lot of people don't know that, you know, ed techs have the same benefits package as our teachers, you know. And the pay might not be the same, but neither is the responsibility. At the end of the day, you just go home. So there's a lot of interesting work here to dive into. And so we'll get a report on this in three months. All right, let's move on. Okay, that was a lot of talking by me, sorry about that. Next up is Lawrence Peters. Can I have a motion on Mr. Peters?
I move we approve Lawrence Peters for her first probationary contract as a special education teacher.
Second. All right, who do we got here?
So, good evening, I'm Holly Day. I'm the Director of Special Services in the District, and I'm pleased to introduce Lawrence Peters, who's our candidate for an open special education teacher position at the high school. Larry has a master's in education from the University of Maine and a, sorry, a bachelor's in education from the University of Maine and a master's in educational leadership from University of Southern Maine. He taught for 16 years at Sacopie Valley High School in social studies and English, and then five years at Greeley, teaching in RTI. But who wants to work in Cumberland? So he trained at Gloucester. And I think that's the most important piece, is he's been an ed tech in our district for the past year at the high school. So he knows our high school, he knows our staff, he knows our students. So we're super excited that he is ready to step into an open teaching position that we have, and I'm pleased to support that.
Awesome. Any questions or thoughts? Let's get them going, all right. Are all in favor? Excellent. Thank you for joining us, we appreciate it. And just think about how much you know about our transportation issues now. Okay, let's consider a school-sponsored trip to Washington, DC. Let's just hear the presentation first, then we can have a motion. Thank you for your tech support, Shannon.
Hello, everyone. I'm Katie Joseph Sarmo, seventh-grade math and science teacher this year. And I came last year to ask for your support for this trip. So this, did you all get the write-up? Okay, good.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure. So last year, we brought eighth grade, we brought 27 eighth graders to Washington, DC, and it went phenomenally. They, I was very impressed with their leadership. We got a nice shout-out from the airline on our way down. They said we were the most respectful group of students they had ever seen, so that was kind of a nice little accolade. And I'm hoping to go again this year with eighth graders. There are 19 students currently signed up, and we have staff chaperones, myself and Robin McClellan that have, that has volunteered to go. We can have an additional staff member if we have a few more students signed up. So we partner with World Strides, who is a tour company, and we provide all of the housing, transportation programming, and everything. I think that's it in my presentation.
Terrific. I can't remember if we've had this app before, but for new board members, we do have to approve any overnight trips that involve students, so that's why this is on the agenda. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, how much did it cost last year?
Off the top of my head, I think it was $2,250. This year, it's $2,325 per student.
27 students in what, one overnight?
It's so, it's three nights and four days. And we pack our programming, so we leave as early as possible on the first night. So I think last year, our flight was at like 5:30 in the morning. And then we come on the last flight home Friday night. So we got in around midnight last year.
Okay, thank you.
And they do the fundraising for that, correct?
We don't do fundraising because it's an opt-in trip. This year, the Fraternal Order of the Eagles had offered to do their yearly fundraiser for us, but there was some leadership change, and they decided to back out of that.
And what sights do you see in Washington when you go?
Oh, almost like all of, we were so busy. So we went to the African-American Museum. We went to all the Smithsonian museums. We went to all of the monuments, all of the memorials. Because we had more students than what was quoted for our trip, the company threw in perks, I guess. We went to Dave and Buster's for dinner one night and spent some more time at the arcade, which was fun. So like Lincoln Memorial, World War II Memorial. We did go to the White House, just on the outside for a picture stuff. And what was really cool, we went to Capitol Hill, and we were able to actually get passes from Angus King for the gallery. So we were able to sit up in the gallery, and we watched senators vote on a Supreme Justice Judge of California. So that was pretty cool to watch all of the officials come in and yay, and then walk right out the door.
Terrific. All right, can I hear a motion that we approve this school-sponsored trip to Washington, DC as per our policy?
I move we approve the school-sponsored trip to Washington, DC as per policy IJOA under school-sponsored trips and non-school-sponsored student trips.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, thanks so much. Appreciate you coming out. We do have another, wait.
Under superintendent's...
Oh. And so what?
I was just gonna mention it, but Vargas is here. There might be a way to tell him where those two has to go. It's within the same policy. It's responsible, it's school-sponsored.
Data dash, no.
So we don't have to vote on it, but...
So we don't have to vote on it, but just make it as a way.
Alright, Jenny. Uh, it appears that there's a non-school-sponsored trip that Craig was going to inform us about, but he happened to notice that you were here, would you like to tell people about said trip or? You know, I know how much you enjoy speaking at the mic, so.
I love the microphone.
I know.
Okay, um, this year we're in, I'm sorry, uh, for the twenty, um, twenty-five school year in April, we're planning to take kids to Ecuador. We found a really cool trip where the kids get to see both the Andes side of Ecuador and the Am- Amazon's side of Ecuador. And they get to do some cool interactive activities, like a cooking class, a dance class. Um, and we get to visit an indigenous community in the Amazon. And that's the best plan for the April trip. And since, um, normally we vote on trips, but we didn't get that together in time this year for the kids to vote. But this is the best option that Ms. Ugli, my co-captain and I, we ca- we put together for the April trip. So this school year in February, we're going on a trip to Italy with about seventeen students, with, with seventeen students, and so this Ecuador trip will be for the following school year.
Great, and it is not school-sponsored, so we don't have to vote on it, but it is just an example of the wonderful opportunities that our students could take advantage of at Gray and Gloucester High School. Thank you, Jenny. Okay, now you don't have to talk about that in your superintendent's report, look at that, we have killed birds, there was in bushes or whatever. Um, alright, let's uh, hear a report on the data dashboard. Do you need a power plug, Janet?
Uh, we are holding up great.
Excellent.
So that is good news. Sorry, I don't really have a lot of stuff up, I haven't had my computer. Um, so every year in December, we do a data dashboard presentation for the board. Um, this year's looks a little bit different and there were a lot of documents, so let me walk you through it. Um, usually how things work is we have the ESEA data dashboard available, it's available publicly. So any information that you as board members or anyone in the community wants to see, you can go look it up. So we don't spend a ton of time presenting that information at the board level because it's information anyone can access. Unfortunately, this year's data is not up yet, so we felt it was important for us to do a little bit more than we usually do because you can't access the data as you normally would. I still just want to take a second um, and remind folks how you access that, there's a link to the ESEA data dashboard on our website. But if you um, if you just Google ESEA data dashboard Maine, it's going to bring you right to the Department of Education site. It looks like this, and when you scroll down, I'm sure you can see this very well on your TVs, but there is a dropdown over here for the years. Any moment now, we're told, twenty-two, twenty-three will be on there as well. Um, you then can look at the whole state, um, you can look at every school district in the state, or you can look at each individual school in the state. For all of those ways you would look at it, all of these data points I currently have up there are available to you. Student demographics, teacher certifications, per pupil spending, chronic absenteeism, state assessments. All of this data is available at the school level, the district level and the state level for you to look at, going back multiple years. Additionally, um, this gives you an opportunity to dig down in the data a little bit on, um, like getting down into demographics, if that's something that you're interested in of different populations. Um, I would just remind folks that if you are looking, it's not always the fastest thing, I'll be honest. If you're looking for MSAD fifteen, we're listed on their list actually under RSU fifteen. We are technically legally RSU, um, so you want to scroll down to the Rs, RSU fifteen, MSAD fifteen. This data is now all our data, um, from, it's a couple of years old though. Um, when you click on state assessments, it's going to give you um, the English language arts and math data. You've got radial buttons up at the top that you change, but if you click on this student population, you can then have it break down for you by male, female, um, race, ethnicity, homelessness, um, all the ways that we divide and label kids. Um, and as I said, you can look at that at the school level, at the district level, for every school and district in the state of Maine, as well as looking at, at the state level. So that is a ridiculous amount of information at your fingertips. If you had a burning question, this is a great place for people to go to find information. And as I said, at any minute, we are told, it will have twenty-two, twenty-three data as well. Okay. Bear with me, we were not able to figure out how to split screen, so I can't see my presentation notes. So if I miss something important, Jim, will you split me? Um, our curriculum committee has seen all of this already, we did spend some, spend some time talking about what is the most important for you to see, and that's what I'm sharing with you today. So in addition to the ESEA data dashboard that you all have access to, this is the supplementary data dashboard, it was in your packet that we present every year. That includes three years of benchmark reading and mathematics data, that's based on our Northwest Educational Assessment or NWEA, so people call it NOEA. Um, that is the norms referenced testing um, by each grade level. We report out the percentage of students who are um, average, high-average or high um, in, at the grade level, um, at the grade level. Additionally, we do some more data points that aren't available in the ESEA data dashboard, actually some of them are, but not all. Um, and that's around advanced coursework, particularly at the high school. Um, IB AP dual enrollment, IB diploma, as well as looking at our diploma endorsements, um, alternative credits, and then also our kids who go to PaaS, so you can see that data over three years. Um, I think some trends we're seeing in that, um, dual enrollment continues to gain in popularity. Um, it's more and more available for students in, in our schools as well as outside of our schools.
There are some people on the committee who didn't know what dual enrollment meant, can you just give us a one-minute tour on what that is?
So dual enrollment is when a student takes a college-level class here at the high school. So they're enrolled um, at, as a high school English class, but also um, it's a college-level class. So for example, we might offer an SMCC English Composition One-O-One class here at Gray and Gloucester High School. Students get credit towards their transcript for graduation, they also get actual transcript credit from the university. So when they graduate Gray and Gloucester High School, they can have a transfer from SMCCs that has three credits in English on it that they can take wherever they're going. Uh, but we offer it in English and math and science and um, there are lots of opportunities for kids there. Um, diploma endorsements are starting to grow again. Um, that's something that we, that's kids show um, some extra work in specific content areas and they get sort of a little extra stamp on their transcript and on their diploma. We launched it kind of right before COVID, which I think really sort of got in the way of awareness and interest and motivation. And we're starting to see those numbers um, creep up a little bit, there's a little bit more interest among students, so um, that's encouraging. And our interest in um, CTE, the PaaS program continues to be super strong, our kids are doing really well there. Um, they are fantastic partners with us and with our high school, really meeting the needs of a diverse group of kids.
Just again, CTE stands for?
Career and Technical Education, in this case, it's the PaaS program or the Port- Portland Arts, Tech- Arts and Technology High School, Portland Arts and Technology High School. I had my office in that place for like ten years, you think I'd know?
But so yeah, so to be clear, that's, we're sending sixty-two kids down there for that uh, CTE education. So they get on a bus and go down there every day.
We do have a couple of students that attend the Westbrook Regional Vocation every year. Um, we sort of have a, there's sort of special agreements where kids might go to the Westbrook program instead, but it's a very small number, generally we're talking about one, two, maybe three in a good year, most of our kids are attending the PaaS program.
And that's only available to juniors and seniors, right?
Yes, at this time.
Well, currently they have a cohort of sophomores.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
They did the test trial just with our high school students. Um, so Gray and Gloucester High School is the first one to pilot that this fall.
Oh, great.
So that's a new program through PaaS of looking at bringing kids on a year earlier, getting them in their sophomore year. And that speaks to the partnership that Sadie and Kevin, who's the director down there, have, that when they wanted to pilot this program, they came to us and said, hey, can we, can we try this out, so. I had forgotten about that, thank you, Sadie.
Ms. T, you have a question?
Um, we had a tour there years ago, um, it's maybe a good idea, maybe have another tour of PaaS.
That's a great idea, actually.
We have so many board members. Now our entire staff is touring on this, on Wednesday the thirteenth for the um, professional development, we're all going to PaaS, so if anyone wants to join.
Can we, can you send that around? Yeah, great, super, great suggestion.
And PaaS is providing transportation too, they're providing transportation to pick us up and bring us back as well.
You said the thirteenth, what time?
Um, noon. The entire high school staff, four buses and. It's a really great place, it's a great tour.
I want to say, I, I already talked to Sadie about this real quick, but not, um, I had a chance to sit on a parent panel for PaaS. Uh, we're supposed to meet a couple of times throughout the year. So we had our first meeting, it's probably been about a month and a half ago now. Uh, but they do like a supper beginning and then you go to the classroom and do, you know, talk about the program and things like that. And I will say that we are the largest sending school, um, that PaaS has. And uh, everybody I ran into there, including Kevin, the director and the teachers, and they all could not say enough good things about Gray and Gloucester kids. I mean, I had parents in there from Portland, uh, Westbrook, and I think s- another school, I can't, maybe Scarborough, I think a parent worked at Scarborough, but, um, and then a bunch of contractors there as well. And uh, they all were just raving about Gray and Gloucester schools, so we got a really good showing there and uh, we represent very, very well.
Great, that's wonderful to hear.
So, so while we're on this thing, and on, on that school, um, you said sixty-two students, roughly?
This year is sixty-two.
And then, um, do they get like a diploma or is it added to their curriculum here in Gray and then that is included with their diploma? And how many did succeed of the sixty-two that, uh, of the students who attend, how many succeed?
How many graduate? Um, I wouldn't want to give you any numbers, standing here off the top of my head, so I would say let's put that on a list of to follow up on. Um, but it is considered an enrollment in our school, so all of the work that they do at PaaS comes back to our schools and it goes on to their transcripts and they get a G and G diploma. They get certificates from the PaaS program, so they'll get like a completion certificate from the program. But something that's really special and important about the PaaS program is that they also get professional certifications. So if you're in the health services program, you're usually coming out with at least a CNA certification, if not, some are even coming out with, um, you know, emergency services level certifications. If you're in, and now I'm talking a little outside of my zone of things I know a lot about, but if you're in the electrical program, like you're taking certificate programs and you're coming out ready to go into the workforce. Um, so a lot of our kids are coming out um, of PaaS essentially with a two-year community college-type education and certificate, ready to go into the workforce in a lot of areas like, you know, HVAC and automotive and um, electrical and, and those places.
I'd like the percentage of success, success with it. Okay.
Could someone make a note of that?
We were making, I had a note on.
Thank you.
Parking lot.
Okay, so page two of the data dashboard has two um, sets of data for you on that. That is where we share our cohort longitudinal data, that means one group of kids and how they're doing over time. We used to do this in a line graph because I could compare the data going back for like full cohorts, I could have ten years' worth of data um, for a group of, of kiddos. The assessment has changed significantly in the last few years, as well as an assessment disruption due to COVID makes the line graph not make any sense, it has big disruptions and big moves. So we've moved to a, a bar graph as you see here for now. Once we have a few more years of data, we'll be able to go back to something that visually makes a little bit more sense. Um, so we have it for both ELA, which is in the blue, and then math, which is in the red. Um, cohorts are a little bit all over the place, that's fairly standard. Um, we have some cohorts that kind of just stay um, flat and, and this is the percentage of kids who are um, hot, average, high-average or high in their achievement. Um, you'll see them go up and down year to year. Fluctuations of, you know, three to five percent are generally not significant when you see, you know, bigger jumps. You've got, you're really asking questions. You'll notice that math appears to be struggling more than ELA, that is standard with what we've been seeing the last couple of years. And that's why we're investing so much of our time and energy in math instruction right now. And you're going to see that as part of your budget process as we move forward. I'm gonna dig a little bit deeper into this, so that's why I'm not going to go into a ton of information in this exact moment. So also in your packet, I provided you with two pieces of documentation essentially to supplement the twenty-two, twenty-three data that should be in the dashboard that you don't have. Um, one is the state preliminary report, and so that reports the statewide information. And then I created a document similar to the statewide report that is MSAD fifteen's data. Um, because I do, I have access to it, I think I'm the only one that has access to it in the district. People in, who are, are the district assessment coordinators, every district has to assign one, I am that person for this district, so I have access to our data, I don't have access to anyone else, it's just ours in the states. So based on that, I pulled, I just pulled out for this presentation a couple of things that I thought were interesting to note. Um, they're, they're hefty reports and you'll notice that in a lot of the documentation I provided you, I provided you with tons of links to different information, you could lose lots of hours there. Um, don't feel you need to, it's just there for you if you find that interesting or have questions. So the interesting thing to note about the state data is that it is what's known as a criterion-referenced analysis of our assessments, so our students all took the NWEA or the Northwest Educational Assessment last spring. Um, and it essentially got analyzed two ways, the state analyzes it using criterion-referenced, which means they set a bar and they said, this is the bar that is at expectations, this is what we expect students to be able to do. Um, in the curriculum documents, there is a linked like two-hundred-page report about how they hit, how they decided on that bar. Feel free to read it, I'll tell you, it's not a page-turner, but at least explains sort of what their methodology was for picking that. So they picked a level that is, this is what is at state expectations. So one of the um, graphs I provided for you here, it gives the average scaled score for students at each grade level here in MSAD fifteen. It also gives it for our region, which is Cumberland County, and then also for the state. And then it gives that title that the state slapped on our schools based on that criteria that they set. So for reading, um, all of our grade levels are considered to be at state expectations. And if you look up across almost all of the grade levels, we are higher than average than both the state and our region. So from that criteria base, if you take that criteria right and then start to compare it to other people, how are we doing compared to other people? We're doing a little bit better than the state and a little bit better than the county. I then broke that down in a graph format, again, these are all in your, um, in your documents, I'm not going to spend a ton of time, but you can sort of see um, how we're doing compared to the state. Generally speaking, on the state groups, students into four categories, well below state expectations, below state expectations, at state expectations and above state expectations. When you look at the data comparing ours to the state level averages, generally what we're seeing is that we have fewer well below kids and we have more at and above kids than the state does as an average. Moving into math, uh, math is what I would draw your attention to, as I said, math is an area of work for us, for sure, and we're seeing that in the data. Um, for grades three and four, we are at state expectations. And we are, you know, right around the average for region and state for grade four, for grade five, we were actually pretty, uh, for grade three, we were pretty well above, so that was exciting. For grades five through eight in high school, we got slapped with the label of below state expectations. So that is always a little hit to the heart and always a little concerning. But as I dug into the data, I kind of said, well, hold on a second. Uh, if you look at high school, for example, um, our average scale score is fourteen ninety-eight. The region's scaled score average is fourteen ninety-eight and the state's scaled score is fourteen ninety-eight. What that means, if we're below state expectations, then so is the state average. So as much as it hurts my heart to be below state expectations, um, and I don't want to, um, I don't want to underemphasize the need that we have to be doing this math work that we're doing. Um, I do sort of, you know, quirk my head a little bit when in seventh grade, our scaled average is above the region and the state, but we as a school are considered below state expectations. So while we were labeled below expectations at those grade levels, um, apparently so is a large majority of the rest of us because we're doing better than a lot of people and we still got that designation, so. It's one of those things, I think it's one piece of information, that's what I kept talking about the curriculum committee, this is one piece of information, it is a good piece of information, we should be operating, um, in response to it. But I'm, you know, I'm not going to beat my head against the wall and, and cry about it because I, I sort of feel like, well, if the entire state couldn't meet expectations, then I probably should give myself a little bit of a break today, so. Um, so that was just an interesting note that. Um, so that was just an interesting note that, um, in math in particular, across most of the grades, the state average doesn't meet the state's expectations. Um, again, similar in math, we're seeing that when you break it down to that well below, below, at and above, our kids, we generally have fewer kids that are well below than the state average has. Um, and we see a little bit more kids at the above average than we're seeing, um, at the state average level. So, this is very interesting, you probably don't think it is, but join me on this trip. So NWA, so with our kids took one test. And that test was then analyzed two different ways. One is the criterion reference way, which is what I just explained to you, the state set a bar, this is the bar, how did kids do compared to the bar? The other way you can analyze it is called norms reference, which is how are kids doing based on other kids? Um, in the case of the NWA, the MAPGrowth normed reference, it's based on how all the kids who took the NWA in the entire country, which is something over a few million, um, did in twenty seventeen. So when we are looking at our numbers and we're saying, are our kids average or are they above average or are they high? It's are they average compared to every other kid who took the NWA in the entire country in twenty seventeen? So essentially what we have is one test, one time kids sat down and they took some, they did their assessment and it was analyzed two different ways. I think that's really interesting data to compare, and so I gave you some graphs that you can look at. In this case, the NWA, the national, the MAPGrowth, which is the national norm, they break it into five categories where our state only breaks it into four. I took some liberty with the data so that it would be comparable, um, where, um, where NWA considers kids to be high average and high, I put those kids together to be comparable against the states above expectations. And then comparing NWA's average to the states at, the, um, NWA's low average to the states below, and the NWA's low to the states well below. So when you look at that, what you're seeing, and again, this is in your packet if you really want to look at it closely, um, but what we're seeing is that when we compare, when we look at how our kids are doing compared to a criterion, we're seeing large groups in the at expectations. And when you look at it compared to the national norms, the, across the whole country, we're seeing really large groups of kids in that high average group. What does that tell us? Who knows? Um, what it tells us is that, um, the state's expectations are fairly high if you, if you think about it on a national norm scale. So, that's a good thing, I think. Um, with math, you're seeing the same thing, um, or similar thing, our kids tend to do, um, a little bit better when you look at them on the national norms versus when you look at them at the state criteria. And I have a little bit of an asterisk on all of this data that we're going to talk about in a second. Um, this data that we're talking about is from the spring of twenty twenty-three, so it's the end of last school year achievement. We did have, um, a few challenges in the data. Um, in particular, our middle school did not perform as well as we were hoping. Um, and then also we had some low participation in the spring, the high school only had about sixty-six percent of the students participate in the assessment, which is really hard to get a good measure of how they're doing if we're not measuring all of the students. But we'll come back to that, just kidding, we're doing it right now. I don't have my presentation notes, so I don't remember what's coming next. Um, so though, I hope, think this is the last piece. Um, so spring to fall data, so our students took an assessment in May, that was the, that was the assessment data we've all been looking at so far. They take it again when they come back to us in the fall, we do it in October. Usually what you're going to expect to see is that those data points are going to be pretty close. Generally, sometimes you'll see them up a little bit, sometimes you'll see them down a little bit, but drastic changes are very out of the ordinary. And if you're going to see a drastic change, you usually see it going down. The number of kids that were average or higher in the spring is going to be lower than it was in the fall, we call it the summer slide, happens every year, so you'd expect it to be lower. What we saw were huge gains from when they left us in the spring to when they came back to us in the fall. Um, some of these data points, if you look at, um, the math from, um, fifth grade to sixth gr- uh, from the spring of fifth grade to the fall of sixth grade, those kids gained almost twenty, only, almost twenty percent more kids were at average or above in the fall than they were in the spring. That made us go, what the heck, and do a little digging. Um, one thing I will say at the high school level, we, um, completely changed how we go about doing that assessment. Sadie and her team worked their butts off to just really change the approach to assessment, um, and how we're talking to kids about why it's important and what's important about it without then trying to get so far into like, we don't want to create test anxiety, that's not the point, like it's just having really good information about how kids are doing. And they had ninety-eight percent participation in the fall. That is unheard of at the secondary level and it, it's everything to do with the hard work of the teachers and changing the schedule, um, of how we're teaching. So I retribute some of that, um, spring to fall shift at the high school particularly to, we now had all the kids take the test. Um, at the middle school level, you may recall in last spring, we were having law challenges over at the middle school. Um, and so we spent the summer reworking how we approached, um, in particular behavior and behavior management at the middle school. We implemented completely new systems as we came back to the year. Um, and we also implemented similarly to the high school, a whole nother way about going about the assessment. Um, previously at the middle school, um, different kids would take the assessment at different times, and so the rest of the school just kept going around them. This year, we had the whole school stop at the same time and assess at the same time. Um, it just added to seriousness, it added to the, um, uh, it disrupt, it reduced distractions for kids. It just made for a slightly more focused testing environment. So what we believe at this time is that these gains that we saw from spring to fall, um, is actually a product of some of those, um, behavior pieces that we've put in place there, as well as, um, attending to a more effective, um, teaching environment, uh, excuse me, assessing environment. To be determined, I, I believe that this fall data is more reflective of what our kids actually know and can do than the spring data was. When you drill down to like the, the student level on some of these data, you know, I, it just would, their data points just went, it just wasn't in the trend line that you would expect. And when you look at these kids kind of over time, this fall data falls much more on that trend line that I would expect than the spring data did. So the spring data is still important, I don't want anyone to think, oh, Jana said throw out the spring data, that is absolutely not what I'm saying. It is still incredibly important data for us to act on, but we also need to consider that we had done had a huge gain in the fall, so now we've got to like extra work hard to keep that momentum forward for the rest of the year. Um, again, you're seeing some dips, um, in math over reading, which is why we do intend to, um, continue that focus on math. We're hoping to wrap up some of that work that you'll see at the curriculum and the board level in the next couple of months, um, with big pushes. And then, um, we also have, we're implementing a K-two math program this year as that starts to work its way up. That should be helping some of this data, so we have lots of plans and you're going to see this pop up here and there throughout the budget process, um, just so that you have the data, but this was to give you sort of the broad stroke. Uh, as we're talking about our decision-making for the rest of the school year and for next school year, this is some of the data that we're using to make these decisions.
Thank you, Jana. Uh, I'm gonna open that up to discussion, but I want to start with the curriculum chair first, Jim, anything, any context you wanted to provide us or?
Well, I, I would say, uh, just, there's a lot of material here and, uh, it takes a while to digest, kind of figure out and, and, but if anybody has anything, when they do take the time to look at it, not, not that you haven't already and I don't want to infer that. Uh, if you, if there's anything that kind of jumps out at you, you know, bring it to my attention, I'll, I'll bring it to Shandra at the next curriculum committee, maybe we can, because there is, uh, you know, uh, when I, when I look at these things, I usually ask Shandra, okay, what do, what do you see in this, what do you see in this data? Because it's, uh, you know, it, it is rather, uh, uh, sometimes it's, it's difficult to interpret, particularly if you're not doing this kind of stuff every day, so. Um, I guess the most thing that I was concerned about was the, uh, the middle school, I mean, she, she kind of touched on that, but, uh, yeah.
Great. Any other, uh, thoughts or questions? Go ahead.
So this goes back to the first thing that you showed us, um, with the endorsements.
Yeah.
Seeing that increase is good, but it wasn't by a lot. Do we have anything that we've implemented in terms of programs to really try to drive that?
So, we didn't implement this program to be, to boost, diploma just diploma did, mhm, yes. I've been at it since six o'clock this morning, can you talk? Um, something that I think speaks to your point, though not specifically done for that purpose, is the advisory program that we continue to implement, we continue to refine, and that's all about helping kids know about all the options that are available to them and then support them through those processes. So as we continue to really refine that, um, and get better at it, and as we have kids that now have experienced it freshman year and sophomore year and junior year, I suspect we're going to see those numbers go up. Do you want to add anything, Sadie?
Yeah, and with the opportunities, I think post-COVID to do internships and to do things outside of school was challenging for many students to get those hours and that was part of the component, the outside of school experiences. Uh, and we're also, many of them have attachments to an upper level technology course, uh, which we don't offer currently at the high school, but we have options, um, through early college and options for the students to get that. So we're looking to see if that's going to hiccup, so what can we do next year, um, to help where to have?
Address the scheduling piece and making sure kids have access to those classes, yeah.
Sorry, and then the follow-up to that is, uh, do we, with, with that process, that program, do we have a way of helping students realize how the experiences that they gain through those endorsements can be applied to their, if, if they're interested in post-secondary, uh, opportunities?
Or even more rewards.
Being able to use those, you know, leverage those as, as ways to help
Mm-hmm.
gain those opportunities.
Yeah, and we're starting those conversations a little bit earlier as well, we're actually stamping it on tentative, on transcripts when we're sending out to colleges now. So if they've completed everything in their junior year, before they had to wait to receive the endorsement for the colleges to be notified. But now we're saying, you know, we're putting a stamp on it, showing that they're in the process of completing this and they've completed everything for that junior year, so that gets sent out to colleges. So that's been an incentive for you, students who really want to make sure that's highlighted on their transcripts. Um, and then really our path numbers are so high, so to get those students, um, that's a really kind of easy endorsement, they do the work right at paths to earn it. Um, so it's kind of just a little bit outside of the classroom stuff that most of them do through their work experience. So just making sure that they know the pathway and each group knows. And now that we have a path advisory group because of the way our schedule is, I think that information is going to be shared with them a lot easier and.
We'll be able to come around them and support them a little bit more in, in completing the process. I will say it's always a challenge to get a teenager to think about how what they do now impacts their life in five to ten years. And any of you who've had teenagers, I think, could appreciate that. Um, so that's always sort of the challenge, but finding the ways to incentivize it in the short term for them can, can tend to be, um, really effective. So for those kids that are headed for post-secondary, that tentative was like a game changer. Um, for our kids who maybe are heading to the workforce, making sure that they have a little support around them to help them complete that process and understand that, you know, if you can go to employer and say, hey, I did this thing, then employers are going to go, holy cow, that's cool. Um, so it's, yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
So, um, the change between the, uh, spring and the fall that increased, how much of it would you say attributed to the fact that they had summer school? And, you know, how would that impact that?
I would love to be able to say that it was all summer school.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, you know?
Our biggest jumps that we saw were at, um, middle school and we don't offer a summer program at the middle school. Um, the majority of our summer programs were pre-K four and the only grades that are tested that would be impacted, um, would be our second graders, so the kids that were second graders and third graders in the spring came in as third graders and fourth graders in the fall. Nope, not even that, only our third to fourth graders would get captured in that spring to fall, um, covered by that summer program just because of the way the assessment works. But we are working on some local data analysis to be able to say whether there was statistically significant differences between students who attended our summer program and students who didn't, using our local data.
Any other questions or thoughts? All right, thanks, Jana, for that presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, let's move into, uh, the job description updates. Uh, this is something that the personnel committee tackled as we prepare for, uh, negotiations with the support staff. Uh, as everybody remembers, they've noticed, notified us of their intention, uh, to negotiate and, uh, it is a rule that we have to look at these every time we're going to negotiate the contract, so we have looked at them. Um, do you want to add anything to that, Jason, personnel chair?
Uh, only that, uh, personnel committee did review them and there was a, a fair amount of discussion on each one of these and what is coming before it is the result of that.
Thank you, and the personnel committee recommended that we adopt these. Um, so, uh, maybe I could hear a motion and then we can do, uh, thoughts and questions and discussion. So could I have a motion to approve, uh, updates to the job descriptions for van aid slash bus aid, van driver, bus driver, food service secretary, ed tech one, ed tech two, and ed tech three?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, any, uh, questions or concerns? All right, seeing none, all in favor? All right, man, that was great, okay. Craig, that went faster than I think you thought, you're doing furniture moving. Um, next up on the agenda is a, uh, potential to request a waiver from the main department of education regarding the two instructional days lost as a result of the mass shooting incident. Craig, what is this all about?
So, there is a law about mandatory attendance and there is a law about school boards set the calendar, administrators don't set the calendar, the school board does. And the school board complies with the state requirements, main department of education requirements for school attendance, so we're all in a, in compliance. There is a, um, the law speaks to when there is an incident beyond your control, you can request a waiver. So for example, we had a hurri- hurricane, uh, with, uh, coast of Maine about five years ago. All schools were closed for two days, but Dunn was really damaged, they missed five days. So, we got a waiver to allow Dunn not to have to make up all those days because we couldn't control the hurricane and they lost a transformer, they missed five days. So that was the last time this school district enacted a waiver. We had the tragedy in Lewiston, uh, virtually all the schools in the region closed for two days. And, uh, there are many school districts that applied for a waiver, uh, to not to have to make up those days. I'm suggesting that we ask for a waiver not to make up those two days and to put it in our hip pocket, meaning if we have, um, a lot of snow days, that would put us beyond the federal holiday of Juneteenth, I wouldn't want to have to bring kids back for one day on a Tuesday to make up that day, I don't think it would be a very productive, uh, thing to do. If we don't have, and, uh, if we don't have a lot of snow days and we finish up the student days before Juneteenth, then we don't need to use the waiver days. And so what I'd like to do is ask for the waiver, um, get it approved, and then if we need to use it in June, we can use it, and if we choose not to use it, we don't use it. So I think the, the magic thing here is, can't predict how many snow days we're going to have, but I, but I, um, I'm requesting this so that if we do have a lot of snow days that are not remote instruction, that would put our children past June nineteen, that we take advantage of one or both of those waiver days.
So we can put the request in but not use them?
Correct.
That was my only concern, is it really, that nut job would steal three hundred, you know, three thousand six hundred student days, you know? Didn't want to second guess the decision, of course, but, uh, so it's good.
Yeah, no, I mean, uh, well, why don't we make a motion and we can have discussion and discussion? Uh, can I hear a motion to request a waiver from the main department of education regarding those two instructional days?
So.
All right. Okay, in discussion, uh, I'll lead discussion, uh, when Craig asked about this on the agenda, I, I was legitimately torn, um, you know. You know, if school days are important, school days are important. What's the difference between this and some unexpected snowstorm? But I was persuaded by the argument that you just heard, which is, I agree that I don't think June twentieth is going to be a day of great learning, knowing my own children and my own experiences in school. So I'm going to support this, but I'm interested in other people's thoughts. Go ahead, Cole.
Is, what's the impact on our district as far as classroom time? Obviously it's two days, but if we do get the grant, if we do get the waiver granted, like you said, we can put it away in case we need it. Can I ask, what's the difference? Like, can we not just make a decision now if we're going to use them or not? Like, what would be the impact if we decided not to use them?
Oh, if you said just.
If we didn't, let's say we didn't have any snow days this year, but yet we still.
So that's probably about eleven hours of contact, uh, FaceTime for instruction, two days, I would say. Is that correct? No?
Yeah, but I just want to clarify the, the, what the waiver is, because I just want a little misconception.
Yeah.
So when you request a waiver to the Department of Education, you're asking for a waiver for the minimum number of student days. We don't say we would like to have a waiver for two days. We don't say we'd like to have a waiver for the, we say we would like to have a waiver from the hundred and seventy-five days, hundred and, it's late, I can't remember the number. But, um, whatever that minimum, the state law minimum number, we are saying, can we please have a waiver from that minimum number? And they approve it or they don't. And so the proposal that we have on hand here is to say that we would not go past the Juneteenth holiday. So that, to a certain degree, is going to be predicated on how many days do we have? So if we don't have any more days the rest of this year, we will get every student day in. If we have a lot of storm days that are not remote days, then we may be talking about one, two, maybe three, four days that we're slicing off that calendar in order to end on June nineteenth. Does that make sense? Does that help? But we're not saying, hey, can we have two? Hey, can we have three? We, it's, it's hit the number or not, it's from the state's perspective.
Right. Well, just so our current last day of school, if we don't have, let's see, sorry, I'm looking at. Last day of school. So our current last day of school right now would be June thirteenth. We've lost two days, so now we're at June seventeenth, right? So if we have two more snow days, these would kick in. If we have one more snow day, nothing happens.
Doesn't the, the first date that you said, doesn't that already have include like the three?
It says storm.
Snow day buffer?
Storm days are added to that last day in our calendar.
Okay.
So I think you could presume, let's say we get six, six storms. You could presume a lot of those would be remote.
Right. So, and what it does is, I think we're sending a message to our community too that we're not going to have the traditional snow days potentially because we would like to make sure we have all the instructional days. So whereas, you know, maybe in the past, we might have leaned towards, hey, snow day, everybody drink hot cocoa and go sledding. This year, we might lean a little bit more towards, let's have that remote instructional day, everybody bring your computers home. You know, and that way we can try to get those days in without, uh, you know, families make their plans. My other consideration is not just the June nineteen disruption, disruption. We know that the later we go into June, the more likely it is we have ninety-five degree days on our second floor of our middle school and high school, and the kids are boiling and they're not getting great instruction there either. So, um, I think there's good incentive for us to try to wrap it up, you know, as close as possible to that June thirteenth targeted day. Go ahead, Jason.
So I, I, I see it here in the description, but I just want to clarify on this, um, because of the way it's, it's stated. The, uh, support and teacher contracts says that they would not necessarily be impacted by this in terms of the district still owing them days to be able to make up that work. Is, so I, I was just curious about the not necessarily portion of, of that statement. Do we feel like that could impact our ability to offer, uh, days for them to make up the work?
Yes, we had that conversation with, uh, the union leadership. And so there is enough opportunity for the support staff to do additional work either through, uh, summer school or professional development that they need to do. And so, um, on the not necessarily piece, there, there, they, there are certain subsets of the support staff that could say, yeah, I want those two days, I'll come in, or I can live without the pay and I won't come in.
But we, we feel confident that we are able to provide those days.
Yes.
No one is going to lose, lose a day of work because of this, unless they want to.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question. Go ahead, Penny.
I am very supportive of this, um, proposal. I think we're wise to consider it now, um, and it will continue to be something to keep an eye on because the, um, Juneteenth holiday is not going away and we're going to have some reason to have this discussion, a version of this discussion routinely. Um, we saw a lot of our peers, I think last year, the district made really wise use of those remote days and we didn't have this problem in June, and Portland area schools were scrambling in May and June at school board meetings. And I know a lot of folks who went past the day and the families were miserable, the teachers were miserable. I think we want to be careful to avoid it as much as we can this year and every year.
Great. All right. Any further questions or thought? All right. All in favor? Okay. Excellent. Okay, let's continue on. We have entered the policy portion of our agenda, looking at the clock. We have about a half an hour left, uh, to my targeted end of meeting. So can I hear a motion to approve policy JK double A use of physical restraint and seclusion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Uh, Policy Chair, you want to introduce this?
Uh, yes, so this is a replacement policy. It is one that, um, we're looking at based on change in legislation at the, uh, state level. And that was put together based on very strong recommendation, um, from, um, the Drummond-Woodsom team, um, recommended basically that we follow it, uh, quite closely to stay within the letter of the law.
Any thoughts or concerns on this? Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Beautiful. Can I hear a motion to approve, uh, policy JK double A dash R procedures on use of physical restraint and seclusion?
So moved.
Second.
So, uh, this is the, um, accompanying procedure that goes with the, uh, physical restraint and seclusion policy. It's actually significantly longer than the policy itself, um, going into the details of what needs to be done, um, what qualifies physical restraint and seclusion, um, how we take care of kids to keep them safe. Again, we are going with the recommendation of, of legal team. And also, um, I should have said last time, uh, this was recommended to use as is by our, um, special education director.
Thoughts or questions? All right, seeing none? All in favor? Wonderbar. Uh, can I hear a motion to approve policy J H B as in boy truancy?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, so the truancy policy, also, uh, review of this came out of that same legislative, um, session. This is not a replacement, it's an updating of our current J H B policy, um, that we felt was well-written. We've just added specifically the piece that, um, we will make contact with the family, um, twice regarding truancy before we'll be on to the next step in keeping with the new law.
Thoughts or questions on this one? All right. All in favor? Great. Okay, wow. That went quickly. Uh, let's move into our committee reports. Uh, let's try to keep these, uh, you know, targeted. Facilities Committee.
Yes, we met before our meeting this evening. An old business, if you recall, um, Craig and the admin team put together this lovely thorough document on our facilities that we're still following up on and checking boxes off. Uh, one of the couple of remaining pieces were, uh, we discussed purchasing an asset management software, but it came to our attention that the current software we have actually has an asset management part to it. And we wanted an update on that. Um, they have started uploading all of this lovely information into that system. There is a lovely preventative maintenance area that will provide us with alerts as needed for all of, for example, for example, we've brought up septic, um, when we need to pump. And then all of our assets are being uploaded, all of our vendors. Um, so everything is easily accessible and handy dandy for everybody to input information as the work is being done. So no need to spend time, um, for staff recreating the wheel. Um, and we'll have a current asset management software program that is relevant and we can pull reports from once everything's uploaded. Very excited about that. Then we got an update on the electric charging station. Basically, the last report that Sam, I believe you gave, or Craig, on the state's soon-to-be requirements to move or to electric buses. Um, we want to make sure that our capacity at the bus station can handle a charging station. And it was determined by our electricians that we can, um, put in one charging station. It's an eighty amp requirement, um, possibly two. Uh, but they're going to look into, um, more of the cost, the details, what the equipment looks like, what space it might be needed for it, um, and do a little bit more digging on all of that because it's coming down the road and we can't avoid it. Under new business, um, a couple of, um, topics there. One was the bond process, um, and that we have our bond committee meeting, uh, committee that's going to start meeting in January. Um, and obviously the facilities committee and the bond process, we're going to be working very closely hand in hand. Um, and what can we do as a facilities committee to prepare, uh, for the upcoming meetings? Um, we just threw out some ideas such as updated field usage, um, study with all of the new programs. There are five or six new programs we've added to our field usage, um, any external requests that we get, stage requests for the, for the theater. And then Cole brought up needing to have a presentation on turf, uh, since that will be a huge conversation when it comes to the bond process, um, and then, um, as well as cafeteria size and needs and demands. Uh, and then we talked about, uh, just briefly, the last thing was, um, just to go over in policy, which we're going to add to our policy list of documents, Penny. Um, a discussion on the facility use process and what it takes to get a request, what those requests mean. I'm just fine tuning some of those, um, processes and policies, um, looking at, um, when we have, when people want to expand, um, people coming in and requesting space and then not using it. We're going to be looking at fees, increasing our current fees, um, some things in there like all of our new dog signs that hasn't made it into the facility's policy. So lots of little coaching clinics and things like that we need to reassess in policy. So that's going to hit that committee. It was a great meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, let's move, any questions about any of that? All right, uh, Finance Chair.
Uh, Finance Committee met November eighth, uh, seems like, God, months ago now. I'm not going to belabor the detail. You have copies of the minutes with the actual numbers in your packet. But, uh, old business, we discussed student counts, charter school up, homeschool students, um, well, I see charter school fifty-eight. Homeschool students ninety-seven currently, uh, current enrollment, seems to be up for freshmen and sophomores, uh, although the, the total number seems to be down, so, uh, the real numbers are in the packet. Uh, new business, we went over October finance reports, so no comments on that. Ms. Monroe brought a few items that we wanted to discuss, uh, to the meeting around budget re- validation and referendum process and the public presentation budget born articles about what things the state required and what the state doesn't require of us in our presentation. And you can read that conversation. And then there was a conversation around ESAR grant-funded programs where we talked about the budget process and how those items that, uh, were funded under ESAR but would need to be reflected in the budget going forward, that those items would be being brought to, uh, the board and our committee as we get into the budget process. Uh, our next meeting is, uh, we had planned to, uh, pretty much fill the meeting with a discussion of ED two seventy-nine so people could understand how that works. At least half the committee, actually three quarters of the committee is new to the board. And that ED two seventy-nine is like a mysterious document to us even after you've been here a while. And so we thought it'd be worth taking our time to have a, spend the hour just discussing that.
Especially as we move into budget season.
We thought we'd get everybody up to speed before we actually hit budget season so that when we're throwing that document comes up over and over and over and over, that there was at least a sketchy understanding of what it meant.
Any, uh, questions or thoughts about that? All right, uh, let's get to Personnel.
Uh, so we actually had two meetings. One, we reviewed the job descriptions. It came before you this evening. Uh, almost the entire meeting was devoted to that. Uh, we had a separate meeting on the, uh, twenty-ninth, where the entire meeting was dedicated to an executive session for discussion of the support staff bargaining contract that is pending. That is it for us?
Thank you, Jason. We also have another negotiation team meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, uh, Curriculum.
Curriculum meeting, uh, took place, uh, was about the middle of the month, I guess, uh, it's been a while. And we got a sneak preview of what we saw here tonight, basically. Uh, and we had an opportunity to kind of pick our brain, ask her for explanations of things and better, greater interpretation of the things. And, uh, that was basically it. Of course, if you want to see more details, uh, it's in the minutes. But I don't want to, I'll, I'll take a line out of Gary's, uh, line. You can look at that yourself.
Terrific. Uh, and let's wrap up with the Policy Committee?
Uh, yes, the Policy Committee spent time on the policies that we, um, just voted on here tonight as well as reviewing some of the, um, new laws that potentially could impact administering medication to students. We bundled these together. Um, there's one allowing for, um, a, I always hesitate to say this word, glucagon therapy? And it's diabetes related, um, added to standing orders for nurses. We have, uh, a new law allowing administration of, um, naloxone by school nurses. Uh, we already have adopted policy for that. Um, and then an additional piece of legislation requiring schools to offer, um, that Narcan training for high school students as an extracurricular activity, but that does not require policy change. So we reviewed that and did not actually recommend any changes, um, to the policy as is. Um, as we discussed last time, um, we met, um, we decided to add a reviewed date on policies that we didn't actually recommend changes to and not bring them here to belabor and vote on. But we did discuss that one and decided not to, um, move it forward. And that was it.
Thank you, Penny. Uh, and just as a reminder, all of our policies are findable by going to our websites, scrolling all the way to the bottom to the footer. There is a link that says policies. You will get taken to a folder that has every single policy we have. And when you open it, you will see the last time it was reviewed, um, very handy dandy folder. All right, moving into the School Board. Uh, moving into the School Board Chair Report, just wanted, uh, for the public's benefit, we did have a, uh, Bond Committee Workshop, uh, last time that we met. And we decided at that workshop to form a Bond Committee, which is very similar in, uh, its organization to the Transportation Committee you heard from earlier tonight. Uh, we appointed members to it. We have, uh, acquired, uh, four members of the public to join that committee. Uh, the committee will be meeting every Tuesday in January. We are going to, uh, make sure that we hit those meetings, uh, recorded so that people will be able to review them if they're not able to attend. Uh, but I would like to, uh, emphasize, and I will say this every time someone asks me about it, that. Uh, but I would like to emphasize, and I will say this every time someone asks me about it, that these are very much workshops. Uh, we are going to be inviting subject matter experts to certain of those meetings, but also you are welcome. If you see that this meeting is about fields and athletics and you would like to come and make sure that your concerns are addressed, you can come. There will be opportunity for comment, and whoever ends up chairing the committee, I will be instructing them to make sure that they err on the side of more comment than less. The point of these meetings is to make sure we consider all the variables and we get this bond package that we've been talking about for a couple of years, even going all the way back to twenty-fourteen for parts of it across the line. The committee at the end will make a recommendation to the board as to what the board should do in terms of a bond on the June, November twenty-three, thirty-seven, who knows what the committee is going to decide. But similar to the transportation committee, we're going to have an opportunity to review those recommendations and decide whether to put them forward or not. So just people who, you know, have concerns about various parts of our facilities, that is the point of this committee. Again, it's five two-hour meetings every Tuesday in January. If you are interested or have any questions, feel free to reach out to me for further clarification. Superintendent report.
Thank you. Uh, new hires, Rhonda Davis, Ed Tech one at the middle school, Abigail Small, health assistant at Tech three, Jessica Slaney at Tech two at Russell School, Elena Peterson at Tech two at Memorial School, Stephanie Dolan Nordick ski, assistant coach, high school, Jason Homer, long-term substitute, middle school. Resignations, Casey Hill Smith, RTI B, Ed Tech two, Memorial, December twenty-one is that effective date. Retirements, Paul Godwin, mechanic, transportation department, effective December fifteen. As a little sidebar, this was Ms. Turner's bus driver in Raymond School Department in kindergarten.
When I was very little.
Yeah, so he's been doing this for a long time and he's been a great, great employee. And I received today on my desk, Dear Superintendent King, I'm writing to notify you I'll be retiring from my position of Director of Finance and Operations at the end of the school year, June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. I'll provide you a copy of this, and so Diane, I believe she began here in two thousand ten. Prior to that, she had been with the Freeport School District for many years. Her husband's been retired for a full two years. So she's been such a great asset and such a key component of this district. And so I wish her a great retirement and I want to thank her publicly for all those, all those years and of work. Transfers, Cynthia Morris has transferred from an Ed Tech two Russell to a health assistant at Tech three for the school district. Brittany Miller has transferred from a self-contained Ed Tech two to a self-contained Ed Tech two gateway program at the Memorial School. Yule Gardner is being transferred from a resource room teacher at the high school to an Ed Tech three at the high school, and that's it.
Excellent. Let me echo Craig's thanks to Diane for her service to the district. Not a surprise, but it doesn't mean I'm not disappointed to hear it. She does fantastic work and she's an anchor of this district and will be very hard to replace. So thanks very much, Diane, but you have certainly earned your retirement and I can't begrudge you. So, uh, we have reached the end of our agenda, other than this executive session, so I would like to hear a motion to enter into executive session regarding the evaluation of the superintendent as per one M R S A four oh five six A.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and I don't believe we're inviting anybody into this one. This is a board-only operation, so we'll give everybody a couple of minutes to clear out. Man in the booth, Brad, I'm not sure if you're listening, but what we do with these executive sessions is you'll take us off air now.
All right, we are now out of executive session at 9:30 and I would hear motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
See you, bye. Thank you Brad, we appreciate your help.
Thank you for going.